Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Woburn City Council of April 1st, 2025. Just a reminder to everyone, tonight's meeting is being recorded for broadcast. Also, please silence your cell phones. If you can, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Higgins, if you call a vote, please.
Counsel Campbell.
Present.
Counsel DeMars.
Present.
Counsel DeMambro.
Present.
Counsel Farulo. Absent. Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Here.
Counsel Papalato.
Present.
Counsel Toro.
Present.
Counsel Viola.
Present.
President Dillon.
Present.
Make a motion to dispense with the reading of the previous meeting's journal and approve.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
First item on the agenda, new petitions as Counsel Mercer Bruin and Counsel DeMars propose zoning amendment to Section 11.3 to allow the building commissioner for review and comment of special permits.
Make a motion that matters be referred to public hearing together and be referred to the planning board.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next, item on the agenda is petition by Organics Chemistry Solutions LLC requests to terminate an inflamable license at 240 Salem Street. Communication dated March 13th, 2025 was received from Richard Blah, Ph.D., of the company.
Make a motion that communication be received made part of the permanent record.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion that the relinquishment of the license be accepted and the license be revoked.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
First item on the agenda, under public hearings, is N Star Electric Company for grant of location to install approximately 11 feet of conduit in industrial parkway to provide electric service for EV chargers to 240 Mishawam Road. Communication dated March 28th, 2025 was received from Jay Duran, the superintendent of public works.
How are you tonight?
Good, how are you? Jackie Daffy Eversource would like to.
I'm sorry, make a motion that we receive the communication made part of the permanent record.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
I would like to install 11 feet of conduit in industrial parkway to provide for an EV charger at 240 Mishawam Road. And we are in agreement with Jay's recommendations.
Any questions?
Sorry.
Yes, Counsel DeMars.
Yeah, my only question is, we did have a previous petition for EV chargers, and I'm just confirming that this was an allowable use in the zoning at 240 Mishawam.
Yeah, this is just the three of them, and it's for the hotel.
Okay. And you're all right with Jay's recommendations as conditions?
Yep.
For the grant?
Seed and loan. Mm-hmm.
Very good.
I don't have any further questions, Ms..
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
I'm all set. Counsel DeMars took care of it, thank you.
Very good. No one else?
Make a motion, we open the public.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
I'll make a motion that the grant of location be approved with the conditions as outlined by DPW Superintendent Duran's memo.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice night.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie.
Next item on the agenda, we have Zoomin Yan DBA Daisy Body Spa for a special permit under Section 5.1, subsection 33B to allow for muscular therapy at 440 Main Street, aka 442 Main Street. Communication dated March 27th, 2025 was received from John Cashell, the planning director. Further, communication dated March 31st, 2025 was received from Thomas C. Quinn, the building commissioner.
Make a motion that communications be received made part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. How are you, Attorney Tabby, tonight?
Thank you. Good evening, for the record, Attorney Joseph Tabby Rubina Rudman, 500 Unicorn Park Drive in Woburn. Here on behalf of the petitioner who's seeking a special permit under Section 5.1, 33B to allow for muscular therapy at 440 Main Street. I'd like to also point out, it's also known as 442 Main Street. The building at 442 Main Street was constructed in 1979 as a retail building in downtown Woburn. It's one-story in height, contains approximately 5,260 square feet of retail space on the first floor, and property's been used over the years for salons, nail salons, muscular therapy. There was a fitness facility there at one point. Most recently, on November 4th of 2022, the city council granted a special permit to a previous petitioner that I had represented for muscular therapy use. That use never got off the ground because of various building code violations and the contractor exceeding the scope of his work as outlined in Commissioner Quinn's memorandum. I've spoken with the building commissioner on this, reviewed his memorandum, and I've recommended to my client, and also have it as a proposed condition if this petition moves forward, that if the special permits approved, that before any building permit is even applied for, that there'd be a meeting with petitioner, petitioner's contractor, and the property owner to go over what is needed to operate the business from the premises. So the petitioner is a licensed muscular therapist in Massachusetts with over 15 years of experience. I submitted a copy of her license with the special permit petition. She understands that if the petition is approved, that any other muscular therapist must be licensed in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The proposed hours of operation are seven days a week, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and the plan is to have a total of two muscular therapists working in the premises. They'll provide the muscular therapy and three treatment rooms that are on the premises. They're going to convert the area where previously they were doing nails and that type of thing to a muscular therapy room. So what I'd like to do is also submit three proposed conditions, whether we discuss it tonight or whether it goes to committee, I'd just like to submit these for the record.
Make a motion that we receive those and make them a working draft.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
So the three conditions before you. The first condition states that prior to the filing of a building permit application, the petitioner, petitioner's contract, and the property owner shall meet with the building commissioner to review the proposed floor plan and all work to be performed on the premises. The second condition requires that all muscular therapists be licensed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the third is the hours of operation, seven days a week, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Questions? Yes, Counsel DeMars.
Attorney Tabby, I think we're going to be sending this to committee, but I just wanted to state early that I think, I don't know if I'm comfortable with the hours of operation for 12 hours a day, seven days a week. Is that typical within the muscular therapy?
The previous special permit was 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days per week.
And why the request for the additional two hours?
Just because she expects to be busy, but, you know, we can discuss that further. If it has to be 7:00 p.m., it's no problem.
Thank you.
Counsel Toro.
Attorney Tabby, I don't know this business specifically, but I have heard some rumblings that there's been some allegations pertaining to the business in this property. So I think I'd like to make a motion, I believe, to get correspondence from our police department and to look at any reports from their department pertaining to this property, so we can have those for committee and review them.
I'll second that.
And obviously, we'll review those in committee, but, you know, again, some of the reports I've heard are rather disturbing, and there's activity that I don't want in the city, so.
Yeah, I've, you know, I heard the same thing, but this business, this is a new business, hasn't been open since 2023.
Yep.
And I did question the property owner, you know, probably about six months ago, when he said he hadn't gotten any complaints from anyone, but let's see what.
Yeah, well, exactly. We'll work it out in committee, and I also, I'd probably second Counsel DeMars' opposition, or, you know, I don't love the hours either. I think it's nine to nine is, seven days a week is a long time for an establishment to be open of this nature, but we'll go in committee.
Do you want, there was a motion? Yes, does a motion on the floor, is there a second?
It was a second.
Second.
So, okay, there's a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Anyone else for questions? Yes, Counsel DeMambro.
Counsel Tabby, I'm just, you know, I'm really concerned what I read here from, you know, Commissioner Quinn, so hopefully, everybody can get on the right page with this, the owner of the property, the contractor. You know, I understand contractors like to take and, you know, get work done and odd hours, this, that, and the other thing, but apparently, it's all coming out here in these correspondence coming from our commissioners, so I really hope you have that meeting sooner than later. Again, with the building owner, the contractors, and yourself, as well as with Commissioner Quinn, so everybody gets on the right page with this property and what's going to occur there. Thank you.
Make a motion, open the public hearing?
Second.
A motion in a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one.
Make a motion that we continue the public hearing to the regular meeting of the council on May 6th, and the matter be referred to the committee on special permits?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you, Attorney Tabby.
Thanks, Attorney Tabby.
May 6th.
May 6th.
Yeah, May 6th is the next. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we have is Mill Street Gardens LLC for a special permit under Section 7.3 in site plan review under 12.2.2 to change, extend, or alter pre-existing non-conforming use to replace an existing swimming pool and garden apartment complex. The clubhouse building containing common amenity space and bathrooms for pool uses at 50 Mill Street. A communication dated, a communication dated March 27th, 2025 was received from John Cashell, the planning director, and a communication dated March 28th, 2025 was received from Jay Duran, the superintendent of public works.
Make a motion that communications be received made part of the permanent record.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
I know, we just have boards. Thank you very much, though.
How are you tonight, sir?
Good evening, councilors. For the record, my name is Attorney Jesse Schomer. My office is located in Boston, 175 Federal Street. I represent Mill Street Gardens LLC, the applicant tonight. We're here tonight with a request for a special permit to the council, as well as a site plan review application for the proposed redevelopment of a portion of the Mill Street Gardens apartment complex. It's also sometimes known under other names, I believe, I had it written down, but I don't have it in front of me here, but in any event, it's located at 50 Mill Street, approximately across the street from the 40B project that's currently under development across the street. Both of these parcels are owned by the same developer, that's Hamilton Construction Company, which is the owner of Mill Street Gardens LLC. We're here tonight, councilors, to request a special permit under Section 7.3 of the Woburn zoning code, which seeks to change, alter, or extend a lawful pre-existing non-conforming use. The current use of the property as a garden apartment complex was commenced in the 1960s. There have been findings that I submitted for record for the councilor's benefit by prior commissioners of the Inspection Services Department, concluding that the use was lawfully commenced before multifamily garden apartment use was outlawed by zoning change under its current R1 zoning. The proposed swimming pool was installed sometime in the mid to late 1960s, so at this point, it's roughly 60 years old. It's seen the end of its useful life. So Hamilton, which acquired the property, I believe in 2019, we provided evidence of their title to this parcel. They're in the process of upgrading the apartment complex, and as part of that plan, they'd like to upgrade the pool, as well as develop a small outbuilding for the residents to have bathrooms for folks who are using the pool, as well as small kitchenette space and an exercise room, all for the benefit of the residents. That'll also provide changing spaces for residents who are using the proposed pool. Pool will be in approximately the same location, it's slightly smaller. I'm joined tonight, councilors, by Chris Sparages. He's our record civil engineer with Williamson Sparages out of Middleton, excuse me. Also tonight, joined by Jonathan Stone of O'Sullivan Architects out of Redding. Both of these gentlemen are available for questions, and I'm going to ask Chris to go through a slightly more detailed presentation of the site plan, since you're reviewing that tonight. Also with me tonight, Marco Botter from Hamilton Construction Company is available for questions if any of the councilors have any questions about their acquisition of the site or anything else pertinent to this application. Just going through my notes to make sure I cover everything for the councilor's benefit tonight. As I mentioned, we're proposing to raise the existing swimming pool. We will connect the proposed outbuilding, if it is granted permission by the council, with all existing utilities, that's sewer, electricity, water. We are also proposing to install new stormwater management treatments. Currently, there's no stormwater management controls of any kind on the site, so this will be a net improvement in that respect. There's also going to be new sidewalks, new landscaping, ADA compliant sidewalks, that is, new fencing. And as Chris will note on his site plan, part of the proposal is to modify the location of the fence that's around the pool, that's required by state law, of course, for safety reasons. It's currently located partially on an adjacent parcel that's owned by the city of Woburn. That fence will be removed from the public land and put back to the property line to remove that encroachment. We are proposing to re-vegetate a small area of landscaping that is on the city property, but if that is not something that the council would like to see happen, we're certainly willing to modify the plans to remove that. We thought since the landscaping was there in the current condition and has been there for a number of years, it would help to beautify the site to replace the landscaping with something new that'll provide some additional screening for the neighborhood. The conditions that the board is. the board is, that the council is to consider in our request for the special permit has to do with whether the proposed use is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use, and we respectfully submit that based on the upgrading of the site, the new building for the residents, the improved condition of the pool, as well as the improved accessibility, the introduction of stormwater management controls, we believe this will be a net benefit both for the property itself, for the residents, as well as for the neighborhood in general. We're also before you tonight for a request for site plan review, and in that capacity, the council is charged to review whether this proposal is adequately handling the traffic, as well as whether it has adequate parking. Since this proposal is associated with the existing residence of the property, and there's no proposal to expand the number of apartments or residents of the site, we believe that there will be no impact on traffic or parking, and that the existing traffic and parking arrangement is adequate to handle this proposal. The council is also charged to review whether we're proposing adequate waste management, and Chris will outline that in his presentation, as well as whether this is appropriate in its relationship to the overall neighborhood. We submit that it is, in that there is the proposed apartment complex across Mill Street, and that this will be consistent with that development and provide an excellent amenity for the residents. The council is also charged with considering whether the proposed project would adequately protect against detrimental impacts to the neighborhood. Through the introduction of the stormwater management controls, connection to existing utilities, and the proposed fencing and landscaping, we believe that this is properly buffered from all external impacts on the neighborhood. And as I mentioned before, this is proposed to be an amenity for the residents of this site. It's not going to be open to the public, so this won't be, this won't be introducing new residents or folks from other parts of Woburn to use this pool. It's only for the existing residents who are there today. Other matters for the council's consideration are the safety and convenience of pedestrians and vehicle in access to the site. We, as there's no change to that proposal, other than the ADA ramps and sidewalks, we believe that that criteria is met, as well as finally conformance with the zoning code, and we believe that consistent with Section 7.3, which allows the expansion or change of non-conforming uses like this, we believe that this proposal is consistent with the intent of the zoning code, as well as consistent with the development of the neighborhood. So, with that, councilors, I appreciate your time. I'll pause now if you have any questions for me, but if you don't, I'd like to hand over to Chris Barages for him to go through the plan in a little more detail and be available for questions that you may have about the site.
Questions. Consul of the Mass.
Thank you, President Dillon. 60 years, wow. So, this pool has not been in use for quite some time.
That's correct. That's my understanding.
So, it's interesting, because when you go on the website, it looks like it did 60 years ago. So, I applaud you for coming forward, and the folks at Hamilton for upgrading it for the people who live there. That's a wonderful thing. I do have some concerns, and I will suggest to my fellow councilors that we go to committee. I don't think there are any concerns that can't be overcome, but there have been some other issues on the property. So, number one, we have to talk about the pool house, and we'll talk about it in committee, because that is very close to some of the residents, so we'll need to go over in detail the plans that you might have planned to go over tonight. Maybe we do that in committee, but I want to see the actual size. I'm going to come out to the site with the building commissioner to look at the actual proximity. There are other things we need to consider, counselor, as we move forward with potential conditions that have to do with the dumpsters, that have to do with road and control when you start. I assume this used to be a gunite pool, right, back in the day, or was it a liner pool? I don't know, but there's going to be some digging involved. There's going to be some construction involved, which means we could have issues with rodents, which means we could have issues with dust, which means we could, all of those things that come with construction, those are the things that we'll talk about in the special permits committee. In particular, like I said, the height. I'm glad to hear that there's some new fencing, and you're going to put it on your own property. That came up a few years back, so that's good to hear. I do need to let you know, and the folks at Hamilton should know this as well, there have been a couple of neighbors who've had concerns with the dumpsters coming to pick things up at 3:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the morning. That's against the rules, and maybe we'll remind you about that in that, this special permit, but there's, the management changes a lot over there. So, if you could provide this evening the name and phone number of who the building manager is for this building, not the new one that Hamilton is building, this one, I think that will be helpful. I know it will be helpful for me, and there might be a couple of people here in the audience tonight that that would be helpful to hear as well. That's all I have for now, but again, I would recommend to the committee that we, or to the council, that we go to committee, and at this time, I'm going to make a motion that we send a copy of the plans to the building commissioner, as this is private property and falls under his domain, so that is in the form of a motion.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
And for now, I'm all set. President Dillon, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with any questions? We're ready for your presentation, sir.
Thank you very much. While Chris is presenting, I'll just consult with my client to see if we can come up with the name of the property manager.
Through the chair. Thank you very much, sir.
How are you tonight?
Good, thank you, Mr. Council President. For the record, my name is Chris Barages. I'm a registered professional engineer here in the Commonwealth with offices at Williamson Barages up in Middleton. So, if it would be okay with the council people, I have a color rendering that I'm going to pull up in a minute, and I have a handout that might be easier for everyone to follow.
I'll make a motion, we accept that as part of the permanent record.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Just wait till the clerks sets for the notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
President Dillon?
Yes. Absolutely. It is extra short.
Through the chair. Is there anyone in the audience that's here for this presentation tonight about the pool? I'm going to bring this down.
Sure.
I can share with Michael.
What if I don't want to share? Through the chair, we're sharing.
You have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to just take you through the, some of the property information, just to familiarize yourself with the location, and then we're going to just zoom in to where the existing pool is, where we're going to be doing our work. So, this is, this property has a street address officially of 50 Mill Street, but it includes buildings that have addresses from 50 to 82 Mill Street, and the plan that I have up before you here is a big picture view of the subject property. It's just over five acres, so five, just over five acres at 5.09 acres, and you can see the brown squares on the, on the, on the plan here. Those are the existing buildings. North is, to the right, and towards the upper part of the plan, the north arrow, and we have road access to Mill Street to the south, and then the driveway comes in off of Mill Street, and then there's other driveway access on Salem Street, and then Salem Avenue as well. The, the property is in the R1 zoning district, and right in the middle of the plan that you see before you're here, there's a little blue circle right to the middle, towards the bottom. That's the courtyard area where the pool is located today, and around the existing pool today, there is a patio area and some landscaping and some sitting areas, and then walkways to, that interconnect the buildings to this community space. So, I'm just going to flip over to our site plan. So, the proposal is to raise or remove all of the existing components associated with the pool and the patio around it, and as Attorney Schommer mentioned, we propose to install a new pool, and it's a little bit smaller at a square foot area of 1,260 square feet. It's an L shape. That's the blue shape on the plan. We propose a patio area around it, and then just off to the east and to the north, you can see the north arrow on the upper right-hand corner of the sheet. The yellow shape is the proposed pool house. The pool house has a footprint of 2,452 square feet, and it is a one-story building. The height of the building at its highest point is 26 feet, and then if you average the ground grade around the building, it gives us an average height of 23 and a half feet. We propose to bring in town water and town sewer to the building to support the bathrooms in the, in the pool house, and then we are proposing a handicap accessible sidewalks around the perimeter and at various locations where we can tie into the existing walkways that go to each of the buildings. And so, the new walkways are shown in the light gray color, and we have access from the parking area on the Mill Street side, and then, of course, from the walkways that come directly from the residential areas out to the pool house and to the, to the courtyard patio area around the pool. Around the pool, we're also proposing a new five-foot-high fence. There is an existing fence there now. A portion of that fence is within the right-of-way of Mill Street today. We're going to be removing that. We have a good, good survey information, good topographic survey information, so we know exactly where that property line is. We're going to pull that fence line back, but because there is a section of land in, within the right-of-way, like within most rights-of-way, that's landscaped today, it's not, the landscaping isn't in very good shape, and so we'd like to make it look nicer, and it's a small wedge. I'll just walk over and show you real quick here. That's the area that I've outlined that's within the right-of-way of Mill Street that we'd like to plant some shrubs and some trees on that side, just to, just to beautify that area. The existing vegetation is a little scraggly, and we could use some upgrades. One of the biggest improvements that we are proposing is that we are collecting all of the rainwater that falls onto the patio around the pool and the pool house, collecting it with underground piping and carrying it over to an area that we've designated just south and west of the pool, where we have a series of plastic chambers that we're going to put below the ground. We have an area there that's, that's got some, some nice soil. It's an area where we know that there's no shallow to rock. We'll be able to dig a hole and place these chambers, and then water will be collected and directed into that area to infiltrate. Our stormwater report that we submitted with the special permit application is pretty detailed, and it takes a look and explains how we're handling various storm events, up to and including the 100-year storm event, so that's a, that's a nice improvement for, for the project. Pretty easy to maintain in this case, because it's really only collecting clean runoff from the patio and the roof area, so it should last a very, very long time. Just to kind of give you an idea, I mentioned the property area earlier, it's just over five acres. The area in and around the pool that we'd like to disturb is somewhere between 19,000 and 20,000 square feet, and so that would be sort of the limit of disturbance. That's the area that we'll have to dig up and reshape as part of the improvements. I believe that's the end of my formal presentation. Through you, Mr. President. I'm here to answer any questions that the council people have.
Consul of the Mass.
Thank you. I just want to make a motion that I don't see any comments from the city engineer, so if we could send a communication to the city engineer asking him to provide his comments regarding the stormwater management.
Second.
And provide it to us by the time we meet in committee, which I imagine will be next week.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Consul of the Mass.
Just to confirm, around the proposed pool, are those pavings or is that stamped concrete?
So, those are proposed to be pavers, if you will, a paver surface, concrete pavers.
So, it's going to be pervious, and I'm sure, you said that you're going to put some sort of an infiltration system throughout that area?
So, a lot of folks like to call, you know, the concrete paver areas pervious surface, but really, by the time, and not all pavers are made the same. There are some that are designed to infiltrate. These are not designed to infiltrate.
Oh.
So, these will be fitted with stone dust in between and set very good, but throughout the patio area, there are a series of long rectangular strip drains, and so the patio area is sloped to those strip drains, and all of that water is being collected and directed to a separate infiltration area.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, sir. Consul of the Mass. Thank you, Mr. President. So, typically, when a new structure is being built and we have a permit before us, I'd like to request that there be some ground level, like right elevation. I know page number three here in your filing, you have what the pool house is projected to look like. If you could have some additional renderings for us to take a look at that bigger, and give us a better look at what type of structure is going to be going in, that'd be great.
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you.
It's a really nice-looking building, I can tell you.
Yeah, I'd like to see it in color and just kind of get the idea of what it might look like with the buildings around it, if possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Consul of Viola.
Thank you, Mr. President. With the new design project that you're proposing, will you be losing any parking spaces?
The short answer is no. All of the activity is within the courtyard area.
Thank you.
Consul of the Mass.
Yeah, just a follow-up to Counsel Demer's request, yes, to see it as a comparison to the existing buildings, but also in comparison to the neighbors that are adjacent, right? So, that's part of the goal here, to see how intrusive it might be to your neighbors.
So, through you, Mr. President. So, when you say the neighbors, councilperson, is it, is it the neighbors down the street or across the street in the new apartment building?
Not across from the new apartment building, all the people from Salem Ave. and George Ave, that, but that part of the property.
So, I'm going to bring this one close to me. So, just again, for a visual, this is the, this is the area that we're talking about improving here.
So, it's far enough away?
Yes, so the folks that live on Salem Ave. are way back here, behind, behind these buildings. So, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the folks over at, on Salem Ave, and you can see how this is a series of buildings on the, within this development, within this five-acre parcel, and where the pool is located, it's buffered pretty good on left and right, and it is in full view of the, of the 57 Mill Street project, the 93 units that are being constructed right now across the street. The closest folks would be heading down, heading down this direction, maybe down here. That's pretty far away, but is there something, in particular, would you like to know how far, like for next time, that sort of thing?
As, through the chair.
Sure.
As I mentioned, I'll be coming out with Commissioner Quinn to see for myself, but I appreciate you pointing those things out. I, thank you.
One thing that we can do is we could, we could put a few stakes in where the proposed building is going to be, to make it really clear during any site visits, so that you can stand there and look, look in all directions and kind of get a really good feel for it.
That would be great, if, I mean, it's warm now, right, or getting warmer. That would be great. Thank you very much. And again, we're very, I'm appreciative of the fact that you're cleaning this up for the people that live there. We just want to be mindful of everyone around as well.
Anyone else? We're good. Time to open the public?
Make an open, make a motion to open the public hearing. Second.
A motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here who would like Is there anyone here who would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to the regular meeting of the City Council on April 15th. And refer this to special permits.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor Boone.
I just wanted to make sure we got the name of the contact at the building that... Oh, there you are.
Hello. Hello again. Through you, Mr. President, I do have the name of the property manager.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to have to follow up with the counselors with her contact information. I'm just pulling it out here. The property manager's name is Amy Cosner. She is an employee of Hamilton Construction Management Company. I can commit to provide via email through Ms. Higgins, her contact information, her email and telephone number.
Thank you very much. And through the chair, I'll make sure I forward that to some of the neighbors who requested that information, and it's good for us to have it as well. The building commissioner should absolutely have it, so I'll make sure he has it, too.
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So there is a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. We'll see you April 15th.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda we have is Treetop Home LLC for special permit under Section 7.3 for a four-family dwelling at 5 Bennett Street. A communication dated March 28, 2025, was received from J. Duran, the DPW superintendent.
How are you, Attorney Juliano?
Very good, Mr. President. Thank you. For the record, Attorney James Juliano, on behalf of the applicant, Juliano Law Group, 607 Main Street here in Woburn. We had, obviously, a meeting last week in committee regarding this matter. I think our message was clear. I did speak to my client, and he is making a decision. I think the clear message was to reduce the unit, excuse me, the bedrooms to two bedrooms. Right now, himself and the architect are sort of going through what that redesign looks like. I think Yale, the architect, mentioned at the last committee meeting that it's not as easy as just kind of shrinking the bedrooms. It's a whole new reconfiguration and architectural look to the building to make it fit, which in theory should allow the footprint to shrink even more, which should allow some more maneuverability. So obviously, that being said, that does take a little bit of time. We are hopeful that that can be done, that can be met. I would request that the council push this off to May 6th to give the architect a little bit more time. I think you heard her say, tried to push her a little bit to get it for the next committee meeting. I don't think that's possible based on her response, but I will push her a little bit further to try to get this done within the next month or so. So I would request that we continue to the public hearing to May 6th and the committee meeting, special permits to the week prior to. I think that should be aggressive enough where I can push them to get something together, to have a discussion.
Thank you. Question?
There is a communication that...
Make a motion, and the communication be received. May I power the permit?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Questions?
Thank you, President Dillon. It's procedural.
I'm sorry, Counselor Mercer-Burne.
It's procedural, and I think I brought this up in the special permits meeting. I'm glad to hear that you heard the neighbors and your property owner heard of the neighbors, despite the length of time in which it took to hear the neighbors. Thank you. And I'm sure President Dillon is very grateful, and he was very clear what he wanted for his constituency. However, the plans are much, going to be much different. So I'm wondering if you're planning to withdraw your application and resubmit a new application, given how different it is? And I would think that would be the appropriate thing to do.
Through the president. So this application was advertised as a reconstruction under Section 7.3 of the Woburn zoning ordinance for four units, and that's exactly what we're proposing. So the change, albeit it is a little bit different, we're talking about the number of bedrooms. It's not substantial in nature. It's not material. If you look at Chapter 48, Section 9, there is case law on this, specifically Duffy versus City of Lowell, which specifically references what a substantial change is, what a minor change is. If you go further into our own Section 11 of our code, it actually defines what minor-major is specifically. So if you look at that, we have right on point, Section 11.12, subsection 1, subsection, sub-subsection 4, minor adjustments that do not affect the number of housing units is a minor modification. So if we were to bring this forward, let's say we got this approved as a, you know, a three-bedroom, we could bring this forward according to the ordinance and case law and say this is a minor modification. So I think that same precedent should carry forward with this, and I would argue that we shouldn't have to, because it's not a substantial material change, just by changing the number of bedrooms.
Through the chair? I agree, and I thank you for the explanation, but it was important for people to hear it. And I did want to bring up another issue that I don't think we've really talked about. So when you're having at it with your plans, I didn't see a dumpster or any place for dumpster, and a dumpster is required. So can we just make sure that we see where that's going to go when the new plans come?
100%, Mr. President. So I think in my last revisions of conditions, we did add that dumpster will be provided on-site, because that is a requirement. So that will be provided when we do the plans and hopefully shrink the building. We'll show that dumpster, the exact location of where it's going to go. But it is, I believe it was in my last conditions, but yeah, it was thought of.
And through the chair, the reason I'm asking is because I'm concerned about how this is going to affect parking, because parking has been a big discussion about this whole development. So, great. It'll be interesting to see. Thank you. Thank you, President Dillon.
Counselor DeMire.
Attorney Juliano, I would just add to my colleague's question, and I'd also like to see on that plan that you submit, snow storage and a snow plan for that property in case we do, at some point, get the snow we used to get. I'd appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor DeMire.
Just for the dedication of the members, the dumpsters were included in the proposed conditions for 5 Bennett Street. I believe it's, yeah, it is the number three. Also, I do concur with Counselor DeMire that there should be a snow removal or management plan for the site. That was a concern that was brought up in committee. And I would hope that, you know, my other colleagues join in, you know, moving forward with this not needing to be pulled and refiled. I think it would hurt the credibility of this council if we were to adamantly say, "Come back to us at the drawing table with two-bedroom units," and then ask the petitioner to pull and refile, because I think we've made the changes exactly from what we've been hearing from the constituents and the abutters. I would say, though, Attorney Juliano, that if you could, this memo that we received from DPW Superintendent Duran on March 28th, if you could have formal responses at the committee hearing for us for that memo, just so that we have it on the record, from your petitioner and your, you know, your client's engineering and architectural team, just so that we have an official response in writing that can be included in the deliberations, I'd appreciate that.
100%. Yeah, and I think just, I will memorialize, I think, what I mentioned to the council at the beginning of the application, was that, you know, under Section 13 of the code, it's specific as to jurisdiction as to being with the engineer. So I will memorialize that in a formal memorandum for you, Counselor DeMire.
Yeah, I mean, specifically on the drainage, but there are asks relative to water, sewer, and sidewalk, and parking curb cuts. I just would appreciate, I think all the members would appreciate, just a formal response to those concerns that were brought up by the DPW superintendent.
100%.
Thank you.
Here's Counselor Campbell.
I would just like to say that I do appreciate that the petitioner really heard us at the committee meeting. But once again, I know that the design is being looked at, so that we have the two bedrooms per unit. But the other big issue, you did mention parking, but it was kind of, you just kind of said it quickly. The parking is the other big issue. So the tandem parking, I think that really needs to be looked at. So if the whole building is getting smaller, or however else it's being designed, to really look at how to minimize the tandem parking, because it does not function well. It's not convenient for people who have to do the tandem parking. So I just want to make sure that you realize it's just not the two units, I mean, excuse me, the two bedrooms per unit. It's the parking issue and the tandem parking, because if we're realistic, maybe if you had one area where it was one unit that did tandem, maybe that might work, but to have three, no, you had all four, four units with tandem parking. I mean, I just cannot see that working. So, and we did bring that up in committee, and the petitioner did seem to respond and understand that, which was great. So I just want to bring that up, as well as the design is being done, to really think of how the parking can be done through the new design, so that maybe you can alleviate this tandem parking, or even minimize it as much as possible. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Viola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Attorney. Have you figured out how close you are to the actual nearest municipal lot, specifically the Woburn Public Library?
Yeah, we're outside of that requirement, so we're going to have to make it fit on.
Thank you.
You need a different measuring tape.
I need the, that's right.
Counselor DeMire.
Thank you. Through the president to Counselor Campbell, I was just curious, because I know previously we've approved a project in your ward that had tandem parking in the south end. And I was just wondering if you've ever received any complaints from the neighbors after that redevelopment occurred?
Yeah, no, I haven't. But I could actually just knock at their doors and see how things are going with the tandem parking.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if it's working, that was a beautiful redevelopment plan that we approved down the south end.
It was, yeah.
And I think if the neighbors aren't concerned, we could have a bearing as to what a tandem parking idea could yield for the neighbors. I think that would be an important question to ask.
Okay, great idea.
Counselor Toro.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate that I do appreciate as well, the petitioner kind of looking at shrinking the size of the building, the size of the units, but also in regards to the tandem parking, I think I'm less concerned on that. If the engineer can fit these spaces on the property and there's adequate space for them, as long as they're housing the parking on the structure, and that's the parking plan that's being filed with the special permit, I don't see an issue with it. Now, if they violate that special permit...
That's the issue.
Then we can call them back in for a review. But to, if they're working with us to develop this property, the neighbors are happy with the units, which was the big issue during committee, I think the tandem parking is not our issue, per se. If we approve it, and it works, and there's no violations, let's push it forward. That's just my thought on it, so.
Mr. President, just a quick response. It wasn't just Counselor Toro, it wasn't just the apartments that the constituents were concerned about. They were concerned about the parking as well. And if the tandem parking works, great, but what the issue or their concern was, is that all the other parking is going out on the street. And so, which is then going to clog the street, which is what they're hoping is not going to take place, that the parking would stay on the premises. If that's the case, fantastic. That's what I'm hoping would take place.
Through the chair. And I understand that, but if we're approving the parking management plan, let's say for that property, with the tandem parking, and then the residents have concerns, they'll be reaching out to their ward counselors, we can then pull that special permit back in, I believe, to have a conversation on the parking of the property. I understand that Bennett Street is a tight space, tight area. I think it's, I think there's some concern even in DPW Superintendent Duran's memo for March 28th pertaining to the proposed parking, you know, maneuverability plan, because it's tight and small, and parking is prohibited on Bennett Street. I understand that. But again, we've done this before in other projects, as Counselor DeMire has referenced. In your ward, we have not yet received any complaints. If you go knock on the doors, I'd love to hear that in committee to see if they say anything. But again, if they're bending, making these units smaller, less bedrooms, they're conceding to the residents, I think we need to work with both people. This property is in terrible condition. We want to see it renovated. I think everybody does. I think so, let's see what comes out of committee. But I'm a little less concerned about housing the parking on their property tandemly, as long as they adhere to it. And I think Counselor Juliano, just make sure your petitioner understands that that is a big sticking point, and they need to adhere to that tandem parking. That's it.
Mr. President, yeah, so there's a balancing act like anything. So, you know, tandem parking is allowed under Section 8, but the question, you know, the balancing act for us is, you know, and the engineer did look at the turning radiuses, they have to be able to turn into the spaces and turn out of the spaces, coupled with a storage plan, coupled with a dumpster. So all of that is kind of put together in all, we're aware of it all. So that's the balancing act. I'm hoping, you know, if my client shrinks the building, that gives us a little bit more leeway with the turning radiuses, and all is good. But hopefully, we can give a report back in about a couple of weeks, and everything is a moot point, so.
Counselor Mercer-Burne.
Thank you. Through the chair to Counselor Campbell, if you find anyone who says they love tandem parking, will you please have them call the Bruin household? Because we have a four-car driveway, and all I hear from the younger ones, "Well, who's parked behind me, and who's going to move where, when?" So I'd be very curious to find anyone who thinks tandem parking is great. But in this particular instance, in this street, I'm even more concerned about it because of how narrow it is. So yes, we want to work with you, we want to come up with something, but we also have to be realistic here. There's no way to control if people park in the street, unless, of course, we're going to condition the permit, we get registrations from everybody. I don't know how we do that, but I'm just throwing reality out there. At the end of the day, we can't do that. We can't say, "Oh, that car belongs to so-and-so, and they're not allowed to park in the street." Unless it's, we make the street, you know, I don't know, I just don't know how we do it, so.
I understand. Through the chair, but tandem parking is also not illegal. So if that's what they're parking, if that's what they're designing, and they've conceded everything else, let's work with the petitioner. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Counselor DeMire.
Just to outline, you know, I know the concern is with the street parking. And I think in the DPW Superintendent's memo, when he mentions a possible maneuverability plan, or a study that would show that, or just give us some design math that would show that, I think that would go a long way, because I do agree that nobody wants to tandem park, but if that's all you've got, and the direct access to your apartment, I mean, when I lived in Providence, we had no on-street parking after like 9:00 at night. There was tandem parking. You made it work to live there. When he referenced, when DPW Superintendent Duran references that this site is very small and off-street parking is prohibited on Bennett Street, is there provision in the code, or what, was he referencing any particular restriction that currently exists?
I'm not aware of one, being somebody, it was a tenant who parked my car for the last 15 years on Bennett Street. There's no no-parking signs there, and I don't think there's, I'm not aware of anything. Obviously, in snow emergencies, clearly, but other than that, I'm not aware of any prohibitive.
Okay, because I would caution the council, and especially those may be able to echo who have served on the Traffic Commission, that other than designated parking restrictions of no parking, we do not have the ability to limit individual sites parking, or individual residences parking, or doing residence-only. There's case law across this country that is basically stating that if it's a public road, we can't limit the public's access to it, whether they live in Woburn or not, because it's a public way. So just a caution on that when we're talking about those restrictions, because I'd like to know more if there's a reference there. And I'll probably reach out to DPW Superintendent Duran myself, just to see what he was referencing there. But yeah, I get it. I get it. That neighborhood is congested. I've gone down that street multiple times in my life, where it's basically, you can't see the curb. But I mean, there are ways, you know, not to get too into the weeds here on petition specifics, but, you know, if your client is, you know, if your client is going to be renting these units... client is, you know, if your client is gonna be renting these units, then maybe that's part of the lease agreement. There's always ways we can, we can get to a place where, if you violate a lease agreement, it's your living, it's your living situation. It's not necessarily a problem with the city, and that, to most people, are important when they're living in an apartment. So, there's ways, there was, there's ways that we can work at this, that I don't think, you know, the parking being legal on the site should be a reason to cannonball this, because I don't think it would stand up in land court, to be honest with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Consul De Manbo, and then Consul Mercer-Brewin.
Just so, you know, everybody's aware, I'm sitting on Google Maps as I speak, and there are no parking signs on both sides of Bennett Street. Down the end, towards Pleasant, there's actually a two-hour allowed parking sign that's nailed to a post. So, that, that might be where Superintendent Duran got his information from, if you look, you know, again, to the Google Map system. But, I would also like to say that if this gets approved for tandem parking, and a tenant decides to lease a unit there, rent a unit, whatever, they know that there's tandem parking. So, it would be up to their responsibility to, you know, if they agree to that lease, or that rental agreement, they know that there's tandem parking. And if they don't abide by it, and they do park on the street, I guess that's where law enforcement and the Police Department would enforce the no-parking regulation and ticket the person that's breaking the law. So, I would just leave it as is, and I, I agree with Consul de Mer, is that if, if this is what's allowed, and it can be allowed, then we, you know, can approve the tandem parking, and we have to leave it up to the cognizance of the renter.
Mr. President, judging by the gesticulations of our honorable clerk, I think she may have found a provision in our code that may have restrictions.
Clerk Higgins, you have the floor.
Under the traffic, Woburn Traffic Code, Section 1 Parking Restrictions, Bennett Street has two restrictions. One is no parking Westley Side, no parking, and then two-hour parking on the Eastley Side, anytime between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., any day except Sundays and public holidays. So, that's a two-hour restriction.
So, to that, to that effect, it's an enforcement issue of our current traffic code.
Thank you for that clarification.
So, through the President, yeah, I think it's a one-way street, so I think that's probably why you can only park on one side of the street, which makes sense, obviously.
Consul Popolato.
Thank you. I do agree with Consul Toro in this one. The building isn't attractive the way that it sits right now, and I think that you've made a lot of concessions along the way to get it to where it is. And, I feel like we're getting very, very close to this. We're getting nitpicking things here. But, I think you've done an outstanding job to get it to where it is, so that it's more accessible and more, you know, the tandem parking is a problem. There's a whole bunch of issues there. It's not a perfect lot, but you've done a lot to get to where it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Consul Mercer-Brewin.
So, there was a petition several years ago, we had tandem parking. You got, some of, some of you, I think, might have been on the council, Saint, the old Saint Joseph's Church, when it was converted into condominiums. Tandem parking was part of how people would park over there. So, I will go back and take a look at that permit. I will take, because it was a big concern for the neighbors in the area, and I know we solved it. I'll go back and take a look at how we solved it with the language in that special permit, because it does need to be addressed somehow within this permit. Legal or not, we have a responsibility to make sure this is not more detrimental to the neighbors. And, in their minds, the parking could be. So, but I will make it a point to get that language and make sure everybody gets it. So, when we reconvene again, maybe there's some work that was done in the past that we can use here.
Thank you. Everyone's good?
No, Mr. President?
Yes, I'm sorry. Consul Campbell.
Yeah. What I am talking about with the tandem parking, when somebody says in committee, it was the architect, I'm going back to the drawing board, and I'm gonna revisit everything. Why not revisit the tandem parking? If they can do something about it, then why not? Is it legal? Yes, it is legal. So, I'm not saying it's not legal, because that's what it's kind of sounding like people are saying. I'm not saying that. I'm saying, if the architect says, because we're going to two bedrooms per unit, we are now have to look at shrinking the whole building, why not look at, how do we fix the tandem parking? Why would we not? I, I mean, I think it's silly to say that you're not gonna look at resolving the tandem parking if you can, just because we have a law saying we have tandem parking. If it will be better for the residents in the area and the constituents, then that's the route we should go. If, after she does everything, if it's not possible, okay, then we look at it, and we say, okay, this is allowed. What can we do, like Consul Mercer-Brewin said, to alleviate any issues that could potentially come forward in the future with the tandem parking? But, in my view, why not, at the very beginning, if we can get rid of it or minimize it, why not? That's my view on that.
Thank you. Everyone's good?
Make a motion, open the public hearing.
A second. A motion and a second to open a public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward and state your name and address, please. Hey, Chris, how are you?
Good, how are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Hi. For the record, Christopher Sylvia, 13 Bennett Street. So, I do want to thank the council for the strong voice on behalf of the neighbors in the neighborhood. You know, Bennett Street is congested, and I think that there is something, just some inherent thing about it being close to downtown that means that it's a trade-off that people around the area are gonna, you know, accept. It's, you know, the location of Bennett Street, when I was considering where to move, was a plus, not a minus. And now, of course, this is an annoyance to have to deal with. So, you know, I have, I personally have tandem parking in my, my driveway, and I don't have four cars in my household. It would be a problem if I did, you know, but, but that is a challenge, you know. As far as, you know, the parking and, and street parking, I would say that is the big, you know, my, personally, my largest concern about this project, that, you know, when we have both the, making sure that Bennett Street remains accessible during snow emergencies, there aren't abandoned vehicles being towed, there isn't congestion on the street. And it's actually quite interesting to hear that, the law about parking on Bennett Street, because there's certain things I was not aware of there. Related to the parking issue is the landscaped area on the lot. I believe that the proposal takes it down from 45% to 25% as it currently stands. And, I mean, personally, I'm not super excited about having another, another lot in this region be almost entirely paved, particularly given the large parking lot for the City Hall. So, that's something that I think would be substantially more detrimental. As far as addressing these issues, my personal take on it is that if, you know, we're trying to do a little bit of horse trading on the parking issue, if we can get a, a parking plan that, that looks a little better, you know, I'd be willing to concede, you know, three-bedroom, two-bedroom for the four, or something like that. So, definitely want to thank Consul Campbell for mentioning it. The, I mean, I just think that having tandem parking off of the street is fine. The biggest concern I have about the plans that were presented is that there's three tandem parking lots next to each other, behind the building. You know, all of that together is, you know, I think this is a case where you can do, have tandem parking, you can have a bunch of parking spots behind the building, but I think when you do both is when you're gonna start to get compliance issues. So, one additional request I had for the council was that, for the conditions of approval, that we add a condition that Bennett Street not be closed to traffic during construction. That's my request. It's a one-way street, and it's very difficult, you know, you have to break some lot to get out if you're, if it's blocked. And, while I have the floor, and given that you had indicated a, that substantial redesigns were occurring, you know, personally, I would prefer, you know, aesthetically, that the building be one facade material.
Chris?
Yeah.
Just address us if you would.
Sorry.
That's okay. Just for the TV.
Yes. You know, the, the, the architects had mentioned a, sort of a dappled facade with different colors for the purpose of breaking up the massing. And, I think this, this building is going to have some mass, and I think that that's just going to be the way it is. So, that's just my personal opinion, as far as making sure that architecturally it's not substantially more detrimental. But, thank you for, for all of the work that you've done. And, I think that we can, we can try to, try to reach some sort of consensus here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no one.
Make a motion that the public hearing be continued to the regular meeting of the council on May 6.
Second. A motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
That passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda on the committee reports is the Committee on Finance, the order of $48,812.85 to be transferred from mayor's salary adjustment account to fire regular salary account. A committee report received ought to pass.
Madam Clerk.
What?
There was another matter before that.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Maywood Terrace, yes.
I am so sorry.
That's okay.
I put that in the wrong area. Next item on the agenda, to determine whether the property located in the former Maywood Terrace is a nuisance, as the term is used in Mass. General Law, Chapter 139, Section 1. A communication dated today was received from the city solicitor.
Make a motion that communication be received, made part of the permanent record.
Second.
And on the motion?
Yes.
Would you like to read that communication?
Sure.
Dear President Dillon and Councilors, please be advised that this office has confirmed that if the current tenants of the property do not vacate the premises by April 30th, the owner of former Maywood Terrace will be commencing eviction proceedings and provide this office with evidence of the same. Based on this, it is my recommendation to the council continue this matter to the May 6 meeting for further action if needed. I did reach out to the neighbors after I received this communication from Attorney Silvati to let them know. I would like to send a communication to Commissioner Quinn, asking him to confirm that the property is being kept up as promised by the current landlord and owner of the property, that there is no other things that have been deteriorating on the property. So, to simplify, please, I'd like to make a motion to send a communication to Commissioner Quinn to drive by the property and confirm that it is in good standing at this current time.
I have a procedural question. Is this amendment to the previous communication that was not accepted yet?
No.
Should they accept that communication first?
I, I made a second to accept it, so I'll, that's on the floor.
Yes, we have an underlying motion, correct.
That's on the floor now to, go ahead, President Dillon.
So, we have a, the first motion.
Seconds.
With a second, and then we'll go to your second motion.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. So, that, on the first motion, everyone understands it, just to accept the communication. There's a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
That passes. On the second motion, everyone's good with that? So, there's a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
That passes.
That's all I have for now. I, for the neighbors, this has been a long process, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to wrap this up soon, for their sake, very soon.
Very good. Anyone else?
Make a motion, open the public hearing.
Second. There is a motion and a second to open a public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to the first meeting in May.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
That passes.
That is May 6.
May 6. Thank you, Clerk Higgins.
I'd like to also make a motion that we send a communication to Deborah McLaughlin to appear before the council if the action that is suggested in the April 1st memo from Attorney Silvati has not been taken.
Second.
So, the motion, I'm sorry, to clarify, the motion is to, to extend a communication to the, the property owner.
To attend the meeting on May 6th, if the action identified in the April 1st memo by the city solicitor has not been taken.
On the motion.
Yes.
Has the property owner received that memo from?
Adjustment.
Or received that, okay. I just want to make sure that the property owner receives the, the legal advisory from the city solicitor.
I believe they have been in contact, so I'd be surprised if they didn't.
I just want to ensure that, that way they're properly informed.
It just came in today, so I don't.
A court, Attorney Silvati told me that he spoke to the property owner regarding this very issue, so I would imagine, yep.
Just want to make sure all our bases are covered.
Okay, thank you.
So, there is a motion and a second on, on the floor, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Now, next item on the agenda, is that the order of $48,812.85 to be transferred from mayor's salary adjustment account to fire regular salary account. A committee report received ought to pass.
Make a motion that the committee report be adopted.
Second.
Second, and on the motion?
Yes.
During our recent finance meeting, there was some discussion about some of these salary adjustments being paid before the orders were actually approved. I'm having conversations with the city auditor about these concerns, and also with the tax collector to, to more clearly address them.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Procedurally, Madam Clerk, would we be able to take the next three matters collectively?
That's up, that's up to you guys. It's from Infrastructure and Public Land, there are three matters. If you want to take them collectively, I'll read them out while before you vote.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sure.
Oh, I'll make a motion, we take the next three matters collectively.
Second. A motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
To take collectively and to adopt the committee report.
Correct.
Those three items was the order authorizing the mayor to grant by D Lot A on Forest Park Circle to Judith A. Ballasteri, also the order authorizing the mayor to grant by D Lot B on Forest Park Circle to William and Lisa Booker, also the order authorizing the mayor to grant by easement a five-foot strip of land known as 38 Central Street to Brian P. Noonan and Amanda M. Noonan. All of them were received. A committee report ought to pass. Next item on the agenda, we have on the personnels, the reappearance of Maka Arkavicki to the Woburn Board of Appeals. A committee report received ought to pass.
Make a motion, the committee report be adopted.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
On the appointment of Francesca Alonje Jr. to the Woburn Commission on Disability, a committee report was received ought to pass.
Same action, second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda is under motions, orders, and resolutions, a resolve regarding the disposition and payment of the Central Square Fire Station located at 654 Main Street. A communication dated March 24, 2025 was received from his honor, the mayor, Michael P. Concanon.
Make a motion, that communication be received, made part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
That passes.
Make a motion that the matter be referred to the Committee on Infrastructure and Public Lands.
Second.
On the motion?
Yes.
Like to read the resolution, please.
Please.
Whereas, at the regular meeting of the City Council on March 18th, it was brought to the attention of the City Council that the winning bidder of the auction for the property located at 654 Main Street, also known as Central Square Fire Station, had not yet been paid, made payment to the city of Woburn. And whereas, the City Council sent a communication to his honor, the mayor, Michael P. Concanon, requesting information on the disposition of the property at 664 Main Street, now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the city of Woburn receive the communication dated March 20th and make it part of the permanent record, and that the matter be referred to the Committee on Infrastructure and Public Lands. I know the committee has received a rather lengthy communication from the mayor, and I thank him for taking the time to do that. But, we would like to have an opportunity to discuss this more in infrastructure and public lands, and I would ask the chairman to set that up for next week.
There is a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor.
Aye.
That passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There is a motion to adjourn, all in favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8:17.